We ready?
Yes.
Call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one wishing to address the board?
And could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6th meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. No conflicts of interest to take action on tonight, so we will move on to a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And we are on to the reports of the President.
President Albrety, members of the board, at this time I'd like to introduce Phoenisha Foster. She's going to go over our professional development initiative that we've been working on for the last year and a half for our employees.
Good afternoon. I'm excited to share with you where the current status of our professional development initiative that we've been working on now since September of 2017. I'm used to a surface. There we go. So our purpose is of our professional development initiative is to provide all our employees with the opportunity to continue to improve and increase their capabilities and skills through access to education and training opportunities in the workplace and through outside organizations and through watching others perform the job. And so that's our focus as we think about how to provide opportunities and what to bring to campus or to encourage our employees to go out to. So back in September of 2017, we had a we were tasked by President Griggs to expand our in-service model, that was for faculty, into a professional development model that was applicable for all employees. And so at that time, we brought together a work group of about 10 to 12 people. It's flexed a little bit along the way. Eric is our academic liaison and myself, I've served as the chair and Georgina is actually one of the members of the work group. And so it's been a great mix of staff and faculty and administration that has helped collaborate to figure out how we can live out our purpose on campus. And so we spent that fall thinking about what this should look like and we looked at developing our purpose statement and then what should our expectations be of all employees and developing a reporting and tracking process and then creating our first all-employee day, which that happened then in January of 2018, we launched this initiative. And on that specific day, we had the morning where all employees were required to be there. We had a motivational speaker explain the initiative, had some campus updates and then some optional breakout sessions in the afternoon. And we've continued a similar structure schedule in our sessions since then. At that time, then in the spring, our goal with this was to have ongoing opportunities and so we offered some breakout sessions throughout the year. Georgina did a great job leading a lot of the bring your A-game sessions, so some soft skills. We also would have some teaching sessions and just some general intro sessions. But we've focused primarily now on the three times a year bringing all employees together. So that happens in August at the start of the school year, in January at the start of the second semester, and then the second weekend in May, our second week in May where we're wrapping up the spring semester and some are transitioning to summer and others are off. So some our employee expectations that we set forth was we wanted this to be attainable but for all employees and so we encourage all employees to get 20 or accrue 20 hours per fiscal year. Encouraging this as a minimum, but this involves all levels of all of our employees, not just faculty or not just administration. So we want everyone to participate in 20 hours and that could be on or off-campus or a combination. It could also include webinars. So really broaden our understanding of professional development. We asked those three hours to be reported through a tracking form, so documentation of that. And then we really encourage collaboration because it's not just a couple of us deciding what's going on. We want to hear what others are wanting and thinking, so we encourage them to share their ideas and feedback and also to present sessions as they are able. So we've put together some online resources with the help of our IT department. This is actually a screenshot from the app that will be coming out eventually, but it was the easiest way to capture our current forms that we have out there. So we have a calendar where employees can see what's coming up. There's some links to outside organizations, the state organizations or regional organizations, some forms, and that would be if they have ideas that they want to submit or if you want us to offer to present a session, as well as the tracking form on there. And then there's a signup form as well that we're starting to use to help see who's coming to sessions and then that can go on their personal calendar. So it's been great to partner with IT to get those forms out there and we're really excited when the app is out of its beta form so that we can all just do it on our phones, like we do everything once it comes to those all-employee days. So just wanted to give you some of the highlights and I know this is just a snapshot of the schedule that we had, but some of these all-employee days, what they have been. So as I mentioned earlier, they've been a combination of required sessions that have involved keynotes and then some optional breakout sessions. We focused on technology skills and soft skills as well as some teaching strategies. Our keynote speakers, we've looked off-campus for those and so we've brought in a couple professors from Augustana, our USF. We've also brought in a motivational speaker from Rapid City. And then most of the breakout sessions, a few have been offered from off-campus, but those have mostly been in-house presentations using the knowledge and the expertise that we have on campus. I would say that some highlights besides those specific sessions have the past couple of times, we've done a kind of campus climate building activity to start the day. So in last August, we did a scavenger hunt and mixed them up with kind of cross-employee groups and sent them across campus to take pictures of different tasks or prompts and that seemed to go over really well, even though it was a pretty warm day. So some snacks helped on when they came back. And then in January, we did some table topics and got people mixing again, talking about diversity and professional development and then some burnout issues. And so those, we've gotten good feedback on those because it gets employees mixing with those that they don't typically talk typically talk to or interact with. Another thing that's went over really well is we've been able to provide lunch on one of the days and turn that into a lunch and learn opportunity. So we've done hot topics where that's focused on campus resources that are helpful, like our veterans, Veterans Department, maybe that's what it would be, or the testing center would be one. We've also looked at building community connections. So in our most recent session, we had the Helpline Center come in. This next one that we're planning for this coming May, there's a speaker that's going to come in and talk about running efficient meetings and so just something that's quick and can be enjoyable, I guess why we're having lunch. As far as ongoing, we've focused more on we focused more on these main sessions this year. We weren't finding a time where it was really worth it to put in some during the semester sessions, but what we've done as far as ongoing professional development is send out email communications and from the work group with some reminders and some opportunities or links to other some options for them. We've tried to offer some sessions throughout the semester as available. This year, we did purchase or participate, we have an institutional membership to NISOD and so that's a community college professional development organization. They have weekly emails that come out, lots of articles and webinars and then there's we get to send one employee to their national conference as part of that membership and that will come up in May. So we're excited for the opportunities we have for that and we're looking forward to how we can promote that even more going forward. And then there's a most recent thing that we have is last fall in our internal fund drive, one of the options was to add a scholar, you could contribute your funds to an employee professional development scholarship. And so from that, we are going to be able to offer three $350 scholarships going forward this next year and that application just went out, or it's going out this week and then we'll announce the recipients of those in May and they'll be able to use that the next school year. So so far, as far as the hours and I'm not always sure that this is the most accurate, we're still working on the getting all employees to track their hours and to submit them, but last year, in the first six months of the initiative, we had 119 unique employees submit 2,200 hours. And this year, just from July 1, running this as a July 1 to June 30th, so up through when I ran the report last week, there was 116 unique employees that have submitted over 2,700 hours. And so we're getting lots of hours and lots of participation, but I always want to see that go higher. So as far as employee feedback, I definitely, it's not always positive, as we are well aware, but I've picked some of the big ones that I wanted to highlight as far as the present, so far, what we've heard is the presentations, they like the focus on goal-setting and that they're positive and it's a great way to start the new semester. And I think many of us can attest to that, there's a different feel on campus, there's this energy and collaboration. People have some options and they also have an opportunity to interact with each other and that's been a highlight. Another one has the energizing feel, as I mentioned, lots of dialogue and participation. And so because we're creating some options for breakout sessions, people can go to ones that are most applicable for them. Interactive and relevant was something and so this one, we were especially happy to see because we worked really hard on planning these sessions and so it's rewarding too, I guess, for us as a committee too, when we put all this effort into trying to figure out what people want, that it really is meeting their expectations. They like the guest speakers and so that's something that we have to continue to figure out how to fund. We have a very limited budget for this and so we've tried to focus local, but always thinking about how we can grow this and hopefully develop a plan where we can bring more people in. And then we like to have too many choices, I guess, and need to bring those sessions back. And then the variety and then just it being always focusing on bringing valuable topics and speakers rather than just filling the time. So going forward, as I just mentioned, some opportunities that we have for growth is funding. We don't, right now, our budget goes through President Griggs and so we just try to be really responsible with our choices and go from there. I think that would be the accurate way of saying that and so just being respectful of the of the resources that we have and trying to make the most of them. Time is always a challenge. We have these three sessions throughout the year in August, January and May, but that's not ideal for some of our employees, especially in enrollment management and so is there an ideal time, which we haven't really found? And then creating time during the semester that that we can have some ongoing professional development that employees can participate in. And I would say just continuing to identify presenters and themes, connecting with the community, so always finding new ideas and being able to bring people in. And then another one would be just buy-in from all employees. I mean, we saw there's 116 people that are submitting hours, there's definitely room for growth there and figuring out how we can emphasize that this is important for all of us to continue to grow and that it's not something that you should approach with, I have to be there, but I get to be there attitude. And so that's my optimism spiel for that one. But overall, this has been and it's my, one of my favorite initiatives on campus and so it's been a great opportunity to figure out how we can bring campus together and then continue to improve at our job, so.
I just wanted to add real quick, as being part of this committee, it's been it's been really, it's been it's been a good committee to be on, the staff and both faculty and staff or employees have been very motivated to do this and it's it's been great to get their feedback and then let them run with what what they're what they feel is the best for the for the campus and for the employee base. So it's, I just want to thank that committee, they did a lot of lot of hard work with it and they've really, they've really taken this initiative and ran with it, so thank you.
Questions or comments on the report?
Just glad you guys are doing this. I think it's a wonderful thing for the employees and staff there because when we're growing and educating ourselves, we're becoming better at what we're doing and hopefully serving our community better, so thank you very much.
I think it's important as employees that that as an employee somewhere, you feel more engaged and you feel like you're somebody's investing in you, which makes you in turn want to reciprocate that and invest more in your classroom and then more in yourself. And so you won't hit everybody and not everybody will feel that way, but I think the majority of people do and you'll get more out of them because you're putting more into them. And we all like to grow and learn new things as people and sometimes you might hit the mark and get exactly what somebody wants and the next time, it might not be exactly what they wanted, but it's probably something that somebody else really was interested in. So I would just encourage you to keep kind of throwing darts at the dartboard and you're going to hit it for a lot of people sometimes and some people you're going to miss, but it's still valuable overall. And there's always, we just came back from a conference and, you know, we had a book of things to choose from, so I would agree that there's sometimes too many choices, but I also think that there's so much to learn and there's you can find value in any topic that is presented. So yeah, keep up the great work and I think whether people verbalize it or not, people really do appreciate the time and effort that you guys have put into it.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, I know we spend as a board, we spend so much time on K-12 and gear many of our conversations toward K-12 education, that's in the beginning anyway, what we were tasked with. And I, it's important to me that the work that you do at the community college level and making sure that you do what you do for post-secondary, there obviously you know there's a difference. And sometimes I think we we get so bogged down in what we do for K-12 that we miss the mark a little bit once in a while for the effort we put in for Southeast and there is a difference and I appreciate your efforts to make sure that you encourage your employees out there in appropriate setting for post-secondary, so thank you for that. May I have a motion to acknowledge the professional development update, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
President Albrety, members of the board, thank you. As you know, Southeast is always looking at new programs and as agriculture being the largest industry in our state, we're really trying to focus on that more. So, you know, we've got our Ag Diesel program, we redone the HORT curriculum, you know, Vet Tech will be coming in a year as well. We've done some sector breakfast and a lot of work with industry in town and so one of our next areas is an emphasis in business for agribusiness. I don't know if they'll tell you, but this was a very long process because of the diversity of agriculture, we're trying to find regional jobs that'll work. So this curriculum has been developed with the input of many people from our institution and also from industry. So today, we have Georgina Cavan and Chris Davis and they will present this to you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your time. We're going to kind of go through what we've done and kind of how the program got started. Georgina and I are kind of taking the lead on this, we don't have a agricultural department, so we're kind of taking the lead on this. We're both accounts for numbers guys and gals, so that's kind of our background. But we do think this is a great exciting opportunity for the school and for students. We'll talk a little bit more specifically about some of the opportunities as far as some numbers. This program is going to start this fall and so we'll start this in August of 2018. And we're pursuing students both that are farmers and non-farmers because the farm has gotten so large and so the number of farmers is limited, but the support groups has gotten enormous and so we'll talk to that as well. And again, thanks for just giving us some time today and for your support. So what we're going to talk about is when we did this, when Craig talked about how we got into and where we discovered this, we met with multiple, and Georgina's going to share some specific names of employers that we met with in the industry, trying to develop with this and different people that had input on this. But we developed the program with a lot of inputs from the agricultural industry and as a result, we came up with two themes, basically it come up with science and business. And so what we did, we tried to develop a program that was associated with that. We looked at other schools, both in the two-year program and a four-year program and we tried to make what would make sense for our unit. And so we developed those programs in that and so what we're going to do, we're going to hand you out a program sheet and so this is going to have on it the curriculum on the backside.
Thank you.
And I don't have that in the presentation, but you can see, we really tried to mix the classes with business and with as far as with the science part of it, as far as the soil and science. And so some of the things that we found in our discoveries is animals and land obviously are a big thing about the industry. And so we put a lot of those as far as the soil and the crops, the resource management, the food safety, we built those into the programs in the curriculum. And then the one thing that was really kind of surprising that we did find out from the industry, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit too, but the data, okay? The amount of data that a farmer is obtaining is unreal and we'll have a little illustration here in a little bit, but the amount of data that they're getting and so we got suggested multiple times on you need to have statistics, you need to have analytics, you need to have data sorting and Excel, you know, examples like that. So we really tried to put an emphasis on the statistical part of it and this is kind of what we come up with and again, we're really excited that this is going to start in the fall. And so Georgina's going to talk about the the purpose of the degree.
All right, so with Ag being South Dakota's number one industry and our state alone has 115,000 jobs in this sector, the Southeast Tech Agribusiness Degree has a has a real strong purpose. We're going to prepare students for jobs in a variety of Ag-related support groups. Some of these jobs include our Ag bankers, Ag business analytics, and in our sales areas, implements, chemical sales, crop insurance, and then that's just to name a few. The degree is also going to support our bordering states. In the research that Chris did, Northwest Iowa, that area produces more hogs than the entire state of South Dakota, so we hope to entice some of those students also. The research for this program has involved input, input from many industries. They did a large survey and to some of those groups, they reached out to Smith Fields, CHS Incorporated, Pipestone Systems, Wells Fargo, Farm Credit Services, Poet Nutrition, and of course, we didn't forget about just speaking with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture.
And so another little thing on there, the age of the average farmer is 57 and so that's one of the things that we're going to address because that farmer's going to have to pass that on and that most likely is going to be this younger generation. And so as we met with different bankers and stuff and tried to define what that objective was, we found out that realistically, the farmer is unfortunately its worst enemy. They are struggling to move to the next entry, but the data is enormous. And so I'll give you some fun little facts. And so the goal of the business program was really getting into this and so what I did is I tried to draw up, this is considered a square inch, okay? So it's not physically a square inch, but you get the idea, okay? There are 6.2 million square inches in an acre, okay? The average farmer farms in South Dakota 1,357 acres, so it'd be 8.8 billion squares. And they're getting data back from all that. And so they're getting all this feedback of how much to put on fertilizers, how much the water, how much to do all this stuff, and that's where they were saying we're missing out consistently on just the data analytic part of it. So that was one of the things that was really interesting as we found out. So we really put in, like I said, a lot of interest in trying to find ways to analyze the data. And then really from the perspective of the farmer as far as analyzing the data, you've got to be able to make it profitable. If you're not making money, you're not sustainable, so you're not going to stay in the business. And then again, we're trying to get this program to be more specific, not just to the farmer, because we had implement dealers requesting our assistance that we got salespeople that we can create, but if they don't have a farm background, they won't buy from them. So they got to have a really good understanding what farming is. So when we built this program, even a non-farmer is going to get exposed to a lot of these different facets. So we're really excited about that. And then the professionalism part of it, of is very important, is the the eco-based system, as far as they have to be able to make money today, but they may have to be able to pass this on to future generations. So they've got to figure out how to do that effectively without causing damage to the system. So we're really excited about that as well. And then she'll talk more about the science.
On the science side, we're looking at our soils and our animals. Now again, Chris and I are accountants and really don't come from a farm background, so we brought in our expertise, we brought in our horticulture instructor and she couldn't be here today, but she's going to help us build that curriculum and get those textbooks on those specific classes with the soil, nutrition, animals, and then some of those classes can also transfer into our new Vet Tech program starting in a year.
So are there any questions?
You talked about some of the businesses you've already worked with to kind of develop, have you guys reached out to Farmers Business Network? Okay, good. I was going to say, with the data you were talking about, I'm like that, they are just right now.
That's the one that we've got written down, we reached out to them, we talked with them. I believe that's the one that's going to add 100 jobs in the next couple of years.
Yes.
They're growing, they went into the Globe University.
Yep.
We met with them.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, I just want to make sure.
Yep, nope, we did that, yep. Then I'm sure there's some people we might have missed, but we tried to be very inclusive in getting as much exposure, like Craig had said, we had a sector breakfast and we did Department of Ag actually come and present, we had a couple of farmers and that was extensive and then we actually met with multiple different bankers and tried to get a different perspective. The bankers are excited about, everybody we've talked about is excited about the program, so.
When can students actually start to enroll in this program?
Now.
Right now.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think, you know, with the number of small towns and rural areas that are surrounding Sioux Falls, Southeast is a very good location for them to be able to come and kind of stay local and maybe still be a part of the family operation, but come here and get an education that's directly applicable to what they can go back and do. And I think sometimes you end up seeing the kids of farmers, they try to add a university or they try to do something, you know, they feel like they need to go do something, but they just don't see the value add. And so this is a great option for them to actually be able to come and do some work and go back and see the real-life application of it right away and see the value in that and hopefully get them to stay for the full two years and get that degree and have it pay off long-term, so great idea, I love it.
Thanks. All right, thank you very much. The Ag piece is one of the things that, again, I've been around on the board a long time and I'm glad to see that we're we're at least dipping our toe into some Ag classes that will benefit, the students benefit their operations as they begin to transition to take that farm over from mom and dad as they age out, so very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. President Alberti, members of the board, we wanted to give a chance, thank you for this chance, to talk to you a little bit about enrollments.
And I know data sometimes can be a little boring, so hopefully this will have a little bit of excitement. And I will say, it was an eye-opener in some ways. It wasn't that I didn't expect it, but just to see some of this stuff in terms of graduates that are coming out of the Sioux Falls School District and when they're coming to Southeast and the percentage of our population that fit into that. So, to start out right away, looking at our overall enrollments over a three-year period, and I just took the last three years, the average has been 24, about 24% of our total population are Sioux Falls School District students. Now, some of those are current students, maybe they're taking dual credit, but it could also be graduates. So, about 24% that is, has been for years, I think it's been right around that 25%, 26%. So, it's right around there. You'll notice that Fall '18 did dip to 513, where it was 556 the year before, but at least three of those students alone were in the Learners to Leaders. So, we kind of know where that dip came from, and hopefully that's going to come back with some of the programs we're doing. So, that's the overall. When we look at the students who are coming directly from high school, so these would be students who, let's say, graduated from here in 2017 and came in 2017 to Southeast or 2018 and came in 2018. Over the past three years, that has been accounted for about 24% of our new students coming in who are in that boat of coming right out of high school. So, it's right at that same percentage mark. What has been exciting to see, it's increasing. The number from last year to this year went from 78 students to 97 students coming directly. Considering the population of the students who graduate from the Sioux Falls Skilled District, we certainly have room to gather and get some more of those students to come to us directly. Roosevelt and Washington make up the largest percentage of those. 73% of those come from those two high schools. And then, you'll see Lincoln's at about 15% and New Tech High's around 11. Now, New Tech High, remember, doesn't have nearly the graduation numbers, so they're not going to be able to reach that higher percentage. But Lincoln, obviously, may be an area we can gain some more students. When we talk about dual credit, those students coming in for that, it accounts for about 31% of our dual-credit students come from the Sioux Falls School District. You'll see it drop from 162 in Fall '16 to 126 in Fall '18. Again, Learners to Leaders is a key reason for that. We also do gain more students in the spring in terms of dual credit. And I didn't get those numbers ready, but we do get more students in the spring who do dual credit than do in the fall. And Roosevelt and New Tech High account for all of those enrollments. We did not have any this recent semester from Lincoln or from Washington. So, that's where those numbers are at. This one is probably the most interesting of the data that we collected, and that's the delayed enrollment. So, when we looked at just Fall '18, this last fall, and we looked for students who didn't come directly to us from high school, but they graduated in 2017 or 2016 or 2015 or whatever. So, they've been out of school for at least a year, if not longer. You'll notice that we had 98 students who had delayed entry to us. 49% of those transferred into Southeast Tech. Now, that means they took prior college somewhere else and then, for some reason, decided that wasn't for them, or maybe they didn't do well. But for some reason, they decided that wasn't the direction they wanted to go, and they came to Southeast. But look at that other number too, that 51%. These are considered first-time students. That means they didn't go anywhere. They just left high school, they didn't go anywhere, then they finally came to Southeast. And when I pulled that 2017 graduates just alone, 25, almost 26% of them were first-time students. So, that means for an entire year, they didn't go anywhere, and then eventually they came to Southeast, yes.
Sorry. So, was that that delayed entry? Did you say that was one year?
The delayed entry in this 98 students is any delayed entry.
Okay.
So, I have students all the way back to 1981 who were brand-new, and these are brand-new to Southeast. They weren't at Southeast before this fall. I have one that was in 1981. That student was a transfer student and then came to Southeast, but it was 1981 when they graduated. So, it goes way back. But even, for example, those students that graduated in 2016, I had 61% of them who were first-time. So, for two years, they didn't go anywhere. And if I go down even to, what's another one here? 2014, 58% of those had not gone anywhere else before they came to Southeast. So, it really shows, I think it shows a couple of things that we have an opportunity to address. The first one is, we have students who, for whatever reason, are thinking, I have to go the four-year or I have to go somewhere else like that. And then, they realize that's not for them, and they're spending a lot of money to do that and then realize this isn't for me, and then they're coming to Southeast. And if we can find a way to direct them so they come directly to Southeast rather than doing the transfer-in, our transfer-in rate is close to 35% to 45% of our students transfer in something, and that's very unusual for a two-year. We should be transferring people out maybe, but certainly, they should not be transferring in. They should come to us first and then go on to somewhere else. So, that's one group. But the second group is those students who just don't go anywhere. This is only a small portion of those because we know there is a group that every year graduate from the Sioux Falls School District, and they don't pursue any kind of higher education. So, if we can find some way to get them into some certifications, some licensures, some credentialing, anything that would move them up that scale a little bit so they can actually go into industry and get a job that's a skilled training job, a skilled job, we're just benefiting the student. And then, eventually, they may be able to build that skill and go higher and higher. And there's no reason not to start with a CNA and go the LPN and go the RN and go with the BSN and go on to the Masters. That's as good of a path as going straight into a BSN and going on that way. And so, we have an opportunity to help students understand there's more than one way to get there. We just need you to start it, wherever you can start that path in some way. And there's several ways we can do this, and some of the ways I just put on here, and this certainly isn't an entire list of ways that we can do that, but just some ideas of how we can continue to partner to build those opportunities for students to transition to skilled training. Career and education pathways, the more ways we can create certificates and diplomas and degrees that I can start at this level and I can just keep building on it so I don't feel like, oh, I got to go two years before I can get anything. No, you can go one semester. You can go one class and get somewhere farther ahead, the better off we are. So, if we can create more of those pathways, that's one way to do it. Dual credit and classrooms to careers. So, when we talk about dual credit, we often talk about it just being classes, but really, we need to start looking at dual credit as opportunities to get one of those certificates, get one of those credentials. So, even in IT, as we start to create IT opportunities for students where if you take these courses, it's a certificate in this, the more opportunities we can have students have that when they leave or have a start on it when they leave, the more opportunities they already have in industry for those. The classrooms to careers, I believe you all are aware of some of that initiative. That's another way to get that Learners to Leaders concept back. We know that was successful. We know those students went on. They didn't all come to Southeast, and that's fine, but they went on, and that's the goal. And so, just doing more of those and giving those opportunities to students is valuable. I mentioned the certificates, credentials, and licensures. The Career Coach, the work we're doing with CTE Academy is, I believe, right on the right track. The more opportunities we can get to those students who aren't going anywhere, who haven't done the ACT test and they're just floundering, the more we can get to them and get them into something, the better. Aspire to Tech, we do know we have a large ESL population, and some of them are still struggling with English language, but the more we can build those skills up so they can get that as well, this is a great opportunity for that. And then, something I think is at least very exciting for me is this idea that President Griggs is putting together for the Center for Workforce Opportunity. It's like we all have to get the entire region together on this. So, everyone understands and everyone's going in the same direction. We don't have one group doing this, one group doing this, but we're doing it as a team, or we're doing it all together. And having jobs for the future, partnership with that through our city grant is a great way to get that started because it can give us those first steps, get it built. And then, once it's built, I think this is really going to help us not only get a hold of the students in the Sioux Falls School District now, but the students who have graduated from the Sioux Falls School District, the students who are in the region, the people who are already employed in Sioux Falls that are underemployed. We need to get to them, and we need to build their skills because we need them in the workforce. So, I think that is a great way for us to get them focused and getting, going in the right direction, whether that's health care or whether that's manufacturing or whatever. Just finding a way to get everyone moving forward will help our region. And that's what I have for you. So, any questions you have for me?
The dual-credit difference between Roosevelt, Washington, and then Lincoln of our traditional high schools is different philosophy. It can't be location because Washington would be almost a worse location than Lincoln, I would think.
Right. I thought location too, and I think with Roosevelt, maybe some of that is true with Roosevelt. I wish I had an answer. I asked our person who works with, Anna Fisher, who works with the high schools on that, and she didn't really have any particular reason she could think of for it. I personally think, yeah, there is some philosophical differences, I think, in some of them, you know, whether they feel like, oh, we want the students to go this direction or we want the students to go this direction. And maybe that's just something that we can continue to communicate on and show the different paths that are available for students.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the graduate, Sioux Falls graduate enrollment at Southeast Tech?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Lon.
Good afternoon, President Alberti, members of the board. Lon Heard, Director of Industry Relations. If you recall, almost exactly a year ago, I was here talking to you about the Skills USA Conference and Competition that we held in April of last year. Very memorable for us because we had the April 13th blizzard that we dealt with during that time. Fortunately, things went well and we had a good conference in spite of the weather. Well, that competition and conference, excuse me, is occurring again next week. It will be Thursday and Friday, April 11th and 12th, and we're very much looking forward. This is a year-round effort to bring this thing together. It's the collective efforts of a number of people on campus and off. We've been people in from all over the state. We have 40 different categories that we are, have put competitions together, and these are widely varied. We have everything from culinary to automotive and diesel technology to IT to welding and just about everything in between. So, the first thing I would like to do is thank our faculty and staff on campus. They have done a lot of very hard work to organize these things, and we put a lot of this responsibility on the backs of those people that are working in specific areas. So, as they step up and volunteer to do this, they're responsible for designing the competition within the guidelines of the technical standards of Skills USA. They're responsible for identifying and bringing in judges for those competitions. They're responsible for soliciting prizes for those winners of those competitions. So, a lot of work to be done, a lot of responsibility. Secondly, I would like to thank the folks at the CTE. Josh and his team have literally opened up their building to us. I think the number is 10 competitions that we will be holding there. All of the construction-related competitions will be there. One of the welding competitions, we have a culinary, it's actually a commercial baking and a restaurant service competition that will be held there. So, they have been great partners in this, and we very much appreciate their help. Again, across the state, we've got 11 high schools and all four technical schools represented. The 280 students that you see here is in total across the state. Some of those competitions will happen prior to next week. Those that we do not have the facilities or the capabilities to hold will be held in some of the local high schools and/or tech schools. So, some of those will be completed prior to the day of the conference itself. Those students that place first in these competitions have the opportunity to participate in the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. I think we talked about this a little bit last year, and that is a big deal. It takes up an enormous amount of time and space for this. I believe the 8,000 attendees to that is certainly not an overstatement, and it's quite a spectacle, quite honestly. So, those students that do go, students and faculty that do go, always come back very impressed with the competitions and the competitors as well as the organizers of that because it's quite an undertaking. We would not be able to do this without our sponsors. We have great industry support. We did last year, we do again this year. I'm always both a little surprised and very gratified at the involvement in so many different ways of our industry partners. Everything from very significant financial commitments that some of these folks have given to just the time and effort to come out, whether it be as a judge or as a technical reference, in whatever capacity, our industry partners really do step up and take a huge role in this. And I speak very sincerely when I say, we could not do this without their help. So, if you know these people and see these folks, by all means, please say thank you for us. We do that, but I don't think we can do it enough. So, any help that you can lend us is greatly appreciated. Two things that I'm sure of for next year's competition, we do host this again. I'm very sure that Southeast Tech will do a very good job. It's kind of, the three-year stint is what is practice in the state. And we heard it from Watertown before us, and they said, the first year, you're terrified. The second year, you're competent. In the third year, you start getting comfortable. The fourth year, it's gone. So, I'm sure that the folks will do very well in hosting next year's conference, and I'm equally sure that it will be someone else presenting to you next year. So, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions for Lon. We'll miss your presentation next year. Whoever it is won't, well, couldn't possibly do the same kind of job you do.
I'm sure they'll do very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Appreciate your work on this and your dedication to Southeast Tech. Some best wishes to you and whatever the future brings.
Thank you. It's been an honor.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lon.
Okay. May I have a motion to acknowledge the Skills USA?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Sounds like a funny event.
Yep.
Good exposure for the Tech Institute and get students on campus to see what's going on and hopefully get some people coming back as tech students instead of just high school students.
Very good. All right. May, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other business to come before the board or reports? If not, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.